Clocks say it's seven o'clock. And that's what we're going by. Good evening, board members. Good evening, audience. I call this meeting to order. Montgomery County School Board Order at seven o'clock, January 14th, 2014. My name is Joe Ivers and I will serve as board chair this evening since Wendell Jones is unable to attend. Would you all please rise for Pledge Allegiance?
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Our first point is adoption of the agenda. Do I hear a motion to adopt the agenda?
Some move.
Second.
All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? We have an agenda. I'd like to turn it over to Mr. Stanton now because his superintendent's report, recommendations, and announcements.
Thank you, Mr. Ivers. We have a couple of presentations today and several people will be speaking. We'll begin with Joe McLandrell. He's the Director of Human Resources to come forward and give the first presentation.
Thank you, Dr. Stanton. Members of the board. Tonight I'm here to talk about the sick leave implications of the hybrid plan. And our goal tonight is to provide you with some more detailed information about the hybrid plan and to receive some guidance from the board about direction they want to go with future policies. There's several differences in these plans. As I understand, the board wants to try to level the benefits of the two plans offered. I'm going to go through the presentation and give you some decision points that you've seen before, but to keep in mind as we go through the presentation, to keep these decision points in mind. Consider a cap on the amount of sick leave days a hybrid employee can accumulate. Consider if hybrid employees will be able to transfer in sick leave. If so, how many? Consider if hybrid employees will be able to use sick leave bank. And you're going to consider hybrid employees to be whole if out on short-term disability. It's one of the criteria that we heard from the board as well. And then consider the one-year gap that is in place with the current policy that we're through the standard that we'll have with short-term disability and long-term disability. As a review, I'm going to go over some of the highlights of the hybrid plan. First, it's a defined benefit and a defined contribution. That means defined benefit is what we think of as Plan One and Plan Two employees already. When they retire, they're going to get X amount of dollars, monthly dollars, until they die, basically. The defined benefit is, defined contribution is a little different in that both the employee and the employer give money to an account. And at retirement, the employee can withdraw from that account. Here's the big one, differences in how it affects our policies as well, is the long-term and short-term disability. The VRS and the legislation required that new hybrid employees not be eligible for disability retirement. But instead, the localities had to offer some type of short-term or long-term disability. Now, the state offered their plan, which was UNAM, just through the company UNAM, "Or we could go out to the market." Montgomery County chose to go to the market and chose the standard as the short-term and long-term disability. It's important to remember, the first year of eligibility, an employee that's with us will not be eligible for short-term and long-term disability. There's a year wait period on all employees that come in, all hybrid employees that come This is the salary replacement schedule. Now, the chart illustrates how an employee is to receive pay while out on disability. And as you can see, as their years of service goes up, the amount of days of the percentage of replacement goes up. And they use months of service, and I put below the months of service, those years. And it's important to keep in mind, it's the beginning of the second year. It's the beginning of the sixth year. So they have to complete those years before they're able to move up a step. It's also important to understand that there is no lifetime maximum for withdrawals for this, for these. An employee can take up to 125 days multiple times throughout their tenure with us. It's not a one and done. So they can take, they can take short-term disability multiple times if they have to. So in other words, if a employee's pregnant and then later on, a year later, two years later, they should happen to get in a car accident and they have to be out for a period of time, they can of course go right back into the short-term disability. It's also important to understand that it doesn't stop there. Once they hit the 126th day, they go into long-term disability. Okay, so they're covered. Now, this chart's going to look a little confusing at first, but if you just focus on the first column and the last column, and this is where the discrepancy starts to show with the sick leave. One of the considerations the board wanted us to look at also is to make them whole. This means when an employee's out, we use their sick leave balances to make up the difference in the percentages they're being paid. If you look at this, if you look at the first column, if an employee's out, let's go down to 50 days. Okay? That equates to about 10 weeks. The first five days, they have to cover themselves. That's in every, every plan. So that, those days are there. So moving across, you'll see that 45 days, they'll have to take at 40 percent, which means their sick leave balance, that one in yellow there, is 23 days. So they'll be docked 23 days for being out 50 days. So let's compare the two different plans. And when I say two different plans, there are three listed there, right? But Plan One and Plan Two are lumped together. Okay? Plan One and Plan Two are employees. If they're out sick, in order to use a sick bank, they have to have, they have to have five days of unpaid leave. That's according to the policy. The sick leave bank has a maximum lifetime amount of 60 days. So an employee can only take 60 days out of the sick bank for their entire career here. After 60 days, they are no longer eligible for sick leave bank. They can only use their accrual of sick leave. Hybrid employees can use 125 days for any one qualifying event. There is a wait period of 45 days. After that 45 days, the clock resets for them so they can use another 125 days if they showed, if they needed to. And during that time, they would not, they would not go without pay. They would have at minimum 60 percent of their pay. Again, there's no lifetime maximum, so that likelihood of them running out of sick leave is slim because of this, this policy. So how does it compare with, with Plan One and Plan Two, folks? This is just an example of somebody who has three years of experience, if they were in Plan One and Plan Two, or if they were in the hybrid plan. Of course, we're assuming that they haven't used any days, that they've accumulated 30 If Plan One, Plan Two employees out for 30 days, they have 30 days in their bank, when they come back to work, they will have no sick leave available to them. While hybrid employee, because of the, we're making them whole and they're not having to use all their days, they will come back with a balance of 15. And this gets, this, this margin grows as an employee has more service. As we reimburse more days at a higher percentage, as they have more tenure with us, that increases, that gap increases more. So what are other school divisions doing about this? And this is, this is again, difficult to see, but I've kind of summed it up on the next page. All of the school divisions, all of them listed, have a cap on the amount of sick leave accumulation or are recommending a cap.
Say that again.
All the school divisions listed have a cap on the amount of sick days that a hybrid employee can, can have. Okay? Or are recommending to their board as well, a cap on the amount of sick day accumulation. Most are making employees whole while out on short-term disability. So they're using their accruals to make sure they are paid at 100 percent. Now, of course, if an employee's out of, of sick leave, then of course, they would go, the minimum they would go is 60 percent. They wouldn't go without pay. They would go down to the 60 percent. Most are accepting days when an employee transfers into their school division. But again, they're placing a cap on that. Most have a cap on the amount of days they're accepting as well. Decision points. Remember, the first decision point was, consider a cap on the amount of sick days a hybrid employee can accumulate. We're recommending the 90 days. This recommendation comes from the DOE regulations that, that does not mandate, but suggest and puts a strong suggestion, it says may accumulate up to 90 days. The second one, consideration, is how many days or if we're going to allow them to transfer in days. Currently, our current policy with hybrid, I mean with Plan One and Two, employees can transfer in as many days as they have with that other school division, Virginia school division. We accept them all. However, if we're going to put a cap on the amount of days our employees have, we should put a cap on those that are transferring in. So what we suggest is that you allow hybrid employees to transfer in a maximum of 96 Consider if hybrid employees will be able to use the sick leave bank. We recommend that you do allow the employees to use the sick bank in their first year only. And that would help bridge that gap that's created by the short-term disability coverage that we have to provide. That will allow them some coverage for that first year that they're here. It's important to realize also that first-year employees can take a maximum of 30 days out of the sick leave bank. 15 approved by HR and then another 15 approved by the sick leave bank committee. Number four is to consider allowing hybrid employees to be whole while out to help supplement their pay. We say that this, this is a good practice and we should, we should do this. Hybrid employees should be, be whole while they're out. But again, mandate that they use their sick leave accrual for that time that they're out. And again, the one-year gap created, there's two gaps. One is on with the short-term disability. We can cover that through the sick leave bank. The long-term disability, we are going to make a budgetary, make that a budgetary item for you all to consider this evening. With that, I'll entertain any questions.
Any questions?
Okay, thank you, Joe. Board members, as we move forward.
I think people are thinking.
I have one question.
Yes, ma'am.
With current employees, when they're hired, do they have short-term disability immediately when they're hired?
No, no, they do not have a short-term disability policy. The hybrid employees will. Current employees rely on their sick leave accrual, transfer of sick days, or their sick leave accrual as their short-term disability.
So that's not really a difference with the hybrid, that one-year gap? Or is it?
Well, the one-year gap created with the hybrid is that after that, they wouldn't be covered with the sick leave bank. The sick leave bank will go away for them, for the hybrid employee, whereas the one and two will continue.
Any other questions?
So, we were talking about Plan One and Two, and the example you gave was 30 days accrual, and then if they use those 30 days, that's it, nothing. And with the hybrid plan, those folks literally just use half of, they get credited only half of what they use, and it just keeps growing with the 125 days.
Yes, ma'am. That, that would, the gap just keeps growing from that point forward because that, that's just one example of how it is. In the previous chart, you saw how, you know, if I, if you go back to the, slide six. If I could go back. Yeah, here. As you can see, as you go down, if you look at the very bottom, 125 days, if I'm out 125 days as a hybrid employee, I'm only going to be debited from my sick leave account 53 days.
And at that point, Plan One and Two would have been out of days a long time ago.
Yes, ma'am. More than likely, yes, ma'am. It's a very rich plan for employees.
Any other questions? Can, can we go to slide eight?
Yes, sir.
What, what is, most of these schools are not eligible. Is there a purpose or reason for that, most of these counties, systems?
Most of these systems, I'm sorry, sir.
If you look, I'm on, I'm on my iPad.
This one.
That's it.
Yes, sir.
If you look to the far right, the hybrid, many of these county schools, systems are not eligible.
In other words, they're saying that, that the hybrid employees are not eligible for the sick leave bank. That's what they're saying in that column.
Okay, okay.
They are, they, they have a sick leave bank. There's only two counties that I know of that do not have a sick leave bank in the, in the general area.
And, and because of the way you've set it up, ours is for the first year only?
Yes, sir.
And, okay, thank you. I didn't scroll down far enough to see that top line. Any other questions? Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Thank you, Joe. Again, board members, as we move forward to implement this hybrid plan, we're asking for your guidance and direction on policy changes. Our next presenter, our presenters, Ms. Jennifer Weaver and Harvey Goodwin, would you please come forward to present on the eLearning Backpack Initiative?
The Virginia eLearning Backpack is initiative, is the outgoing governor's initiative. What it is, is they're drawing funds from the Virginia School Public Authority and issued a bond in order to develop funds. So it is a grant that is financed through bond funding, and the criteria is schools that are not fully accredited, receive $400 per ninth-grade student, and that money is used as a reimbursable grant in order to buy handheld devices, tablets like iPads. Additionally, there's $2,400 for content creation software packages. So that would be computers, for example, for teachers to create learning or manage What that does will be four years that that grant will go in for schools. So we have three schools, and those three schools qualify now because they're accredited with warning, and they will receive for the next four years, each year, funds for that rising ninth-grade class. So what does that mean for us? We're going to get for our three schools about $208,000 roughly. And you can see how that calculates out is what the three schools are. Now, at the bottom of the page, we're anticipating questions because we have three of our four high schools. And we want to make the distinction between a, the eLearning Backpack and a one-to-one initiative. A one-to-one initiative would be where we're trying to put into all of our kids' hands a device for learning. So I've given you a number at the bottom of the page for Blacksburg High School. This would be, if indeed Blacksburg High School had not been accredited this year, what would the state have given us for Blacksburg High School? And you see that the fund's there. Okay? Stop me at any time if it gets confusing, please, and I'll clarify. So we're mixing here. We've got economics in front of us. We're talking about technology, but the process that we've used in this county as we've been moving forward, which Jennifer will talk about, is to make an instructional decision. A device is just a device. If you can't use it for learning, it's no good. So handing a kid a device and saying, here, have at it, that's not going to accomplish much. What we're trying to do is improve student achievement. So while we're looking at economics and technology, what we're trying, striving to do is have an instructional decision.
So I get to talk about the fun part. So we developed a committee of central office staff, administrators, teachers, parents, and we started to look at what options are out there for tablet devices. So we selected a variety of people to come in and talk to us to share their products. We looked at Microsoft, Apple, and Android products, tried to keep our options open. And then we worked with the curriculum supervisors and also with the ninth-grade teachers to see what resources do we currently have and what might we like to use if we have the devices available? And we developed a pretty comprehensive list. So then after we reviewed those things, then we tried to make a rubric of what kind of things we'd be looking at and determining which of those devices would be the best fit for us. And we put the top priority, that's why they're first, first on the list, in terms of how do they, how are they compatible with the instructional resources that we'd like to use them with. There are many things that we would like to use the devices for, but we will put an emphasis on gaining back the computer labs and the wireless carts that are currently getting predominantly used for lots of benchmark testing, for Math 180, Read 180, all the wonderful interventions that we've put into place. They're wonderful interventions, but they are dominating the use of our computer labs and our wireless carts. So those functions could take place on a tablet, on the handheld device. We could do benchmark testing. And then we also looked at lots of practical things when we were trying to decide what might be a good fit for us. We wanted to make sure that they were durable. We're giving them to freshmen, they're going to be taking them to and from school. Battery life was key. We wanted students to be able to use them all day long. We didn't want them to go to a class and a teacher say, let's do this, and the battery to die. And that is a pretty big difference in some of the devices we looked at. And we're also very concerned about how we could replace those things because, again, we're giving them to freshmen. We know that there are going to be issues with them. So the budget numbers that Harvey will share with you do include insurance for accidental damage. We wanted to make sure that that was built in. And repair options come into play because, you know, tablet devices are still new, and so we wanted to be sure that if something happened to a screen, if we could replace the battery, we could really extend the life of those devices rather than devoting all these resources and then only be able to use them for three or four years. We want to extend the life as long as we can. So those are the things that we looked at. But again, we really did put an emphasis on instructionally, how can, number one, we can use the resources that we already have because we have a wide variety of instructional resources available to us now. And secondly, we wanted to be sure that it was going to supplement our instructional focus, which is engagement. How can we really give kids opportunity to engage with the curriculum? And one of the best ways to do that is to give them a device so that they can individually be accessing that content rather than, I think you remember from our advanced ed visit, they talked about seeing lots of technology, but a lot of times it was the teacher working with that technology rather than the students. And so those were the criteria that we'll be using going forward if you want us to pursue this initiative.
She makes this sound very exciting. The bad news, it's a partially funded project. Let's talk about what's not covered in this. So the first one is devices. You see what the devices actually cost in the first column. That's based on the iPads that we are currently buying, pretty much county-wide. So that's what they really cost. We're totaling those figures up, that's where the $200,000 is actually, comes in as revenue to help pay. What it doesn't pay for, nothing's mentioned about teachers. Well, how's a teacher going to teach kids with those if they don't have the same device in their hands? So that seems like a little bit of a gap. Cases aren't included. Well, kids are going to drop them. They need some protection on the devices for that. And when we can't succeed at protecting it with a case, we need accidental damage. A standard warranty runs for one year, does not cover breakage due to drop or accidental or the dog ate it, although that, that excuse is not going to hold up very much longer. So we have to get an additional insurance. Again, there are possibilities, and what I'm giving you here is all sort of a budgetary figure, a best guess. I can't give you an actual solid figure at this time until Jennifer and company give me a device that I can start working with to price up various options. Some devices may come with longer insurance than others, so that cost may come down. So what I'm giving you is sort of a best guess on what this program is going to cost. Mobile device management, I don't know if any of you followed the newspaper about Los Angeles school system where they spent a billion dollars on giving iPads to students, and within one week, they were pulling those devices back because the kids had what's called jailbroke the devices and were doing whatever they wanted to. A mobile device manager is the software that prevents you from doing that, for, to make sure that they don't go to places they shouldn't get to, and that we can get the software that they're supposed to be using down to that device. And then the content software, that's what we talked about. We're getting some reimbursement. I priced some of those up. Apparently, the state did not because they're not going to be, give us enough money for what the market value is for some of those content packages. So for the eLearning Backpack, the required local match, you see, this is at the very minimal level that I gave you in slide two. This is what we must do to do something. If we do this, it's going to be driven by economics. That doesn't include any of the other items on this page. So we will be doing it at a very base level, probably choosing a device that is little more than, than a reader because that's what we'll be able to afford at that level. The $548,000 minus the reimbursement is what a true program is going to look like for the eLearning, to do it right.
So you're saying that even though you gave the estimates on a 64-gig iPad, which to me, I think that's really, really kind of over the top. I mean-
It's a good device.
No, that's better than good device. I mean, that's, you know, my kind of thing is, I mean, there's so many comparable tablets now, you know, do we have to stick with Apple because of the name? Which I love Apple, don't get me wrong. But there's a big difference in how many you can buy, what cost because of that. So are you saying, even though you throw, you threw out that price for that, that doesn't mean that's what we're going to get? Is that what you're saying?
No, absolutely not.
Gotcha. Because I have to- Because I have to say, I would, I would be and recommend of looking at something different.
Honestly, I try to absence my, my position in their committee because I've got a technological viewpoint.
Right.
I want them to choose the device and they've been very thorough at what they're looking at and it's down to two and Apple's one of them and I don't know that we would go with that particular device. Honestly, I'm giving you a conservative, almost worst-case scenario, but this is to hold the budget because that's where we are currently in your deliberations, to give a holding figure for doing an initiative that you can pass over to the Board of Supervisors. I've given you a conservative figure that I know with a great deal of confidence that we're going to do something really good for that dollar figure. By the time you finish your deliberations in May, they will have completed their work and we will actually have a very firm figure for you.
I guess, I, I come from a viewpoint where I would, I mean, I, I love iPads. I had one before we got them and the average person gets an eight or a 16 gig. So 64 is what, you know, like I said, way above. And in my viewpoint, I would rather see more students have them and go with a little bit less, you know, than have better.
We may very, we may very well do that, but I'm also dealing with the situation which is hard for a technologist, is I'm saying today something that I know by six months is going to have changed. So a 64 gig is high-end now and by next year, by the time we go to implement this next August, it might be not.
Well, and that's true, but, you know, I've had mine three or four years and, and it was high four years ago and it's still high now. You know what I'm saying?
Absolutely.
So it's not changed that tremendously much in four years. So that's just my kind of food for thought on that. I think it's an excellent, great thing. I just think we really need to, because there are so many competitive things out there now. It used to not be, but now, I mean, the HD Kindle Fire is the new eight, you know, I mean, you're talking $399 compared to.
Absolutely.
You know, $599, it's very comparable.
And they, and they are looking at all of those devices and I don't want to slant their thinking by saying my opinion on those devices. Next step, so let's go from the e-backpack and what it would take and with that basic same concept, what can we do to bring a one-to-one initiative countywide? What's the dollar figure based on the same math we've used? And that's what this slide shows, using the same numbers for calculations.
So if Blacksburg High School was included, we'd be footing the bill for that totally?
In total, yes.
Right. No matching grants?
No matching grants, no reimbursement. So the board chair forwarded some questions. I'm sure you saw some of them and they were very good questions about what additionally. There were other hidden costs. This is, is a burden. My staff is limited and if you're adding 1,000 more devices each year, that's, that's quite a, quite a load.
Harvey, just so the audience knows, the question that was presented was the concern about the hidden cost for administrative, administrate services and support program and how would it burden your, your group?
Thank you. So, yes, we've, in your budget, we've asked for the restoration of the TRT position that was cut a year or two ago as part of budget cutbacks and I really need a technician to manage and maintain all these devices. In addition, each year, you've got an additional cost as more devices are added and you have to subscribe them to the management. So we have, let's just say we have an $800,000 budget that goes into the rollover budget. We've added that this year. Next year, we've got another set of ninth graders. Their devices are covered as part of that purchasing, but I've got more devices that I have to license in my content software and my management. So that budget is going to grow each year until we reach year four and then we've covered our high schools entirely. So what are the next steps? And some of them are in process. They've selected some devices that they're looking at. They're going to beta test them at two schools, two of the competing devices to see how they do, and that will be EMHS in Auburn High School for our beta test. What we're here now for you is we have basically four options for you to consider as you go through your budget deliberations. One is we could do the minimal level. We want to put devices in the hands of kids. It's a good thing at any level to try to do something. So the very, at the very basic, we can do the plan that they have. Now, the drawback to that is will it be great? No. Will it have problems? Yes. Because we'll have devices, they will be hard to manage. That means we don't have any MDM software. So it's difficult. We can also add VHS to that mix and fund them at the minimal level, which would take, I forget the figure on that slide. So those would be economic decisions, to do a good thing. To do a great thing would be to do the last two options. Go with all three schools that have state funds behind it. That would be the third level. And the fourth would be to go ahead and cover all our schools with a one-to-one. And what's the outcome? After four years, all four of your high schools would be totally one-to-one for the foreseeable future. Every ninth grade class coming in would have those funds and I think that's a terrific Questions?
Yes, adding all these devices, they can potentially bring the network to a crawl. Is that correct?
No.
Do we have the infrastructure?
We do have the infrastructure and part of what an MDM, Management Device Software, does is you can sort of tag a device. So the device comes in and you can say, "You can take 10 megs and no more than 10 megs." So it's that software that allows you to manage some of that. So when the kid comes in and says, "Hey, I'm going to go ahead and do Netflix," it's like, "No, you're not going to make it." So it's with that management software, that's what you're doing. Now, without that management software, yes, the board chair's question's correct. You don't have management software. You let uncontrolled devices on your network and it will slow to a crawl.
Do you have in this budget training for students, teachers, and parents on how to use these devices?
We have, that will be done by my staff and the curriculum supervisors working together. So that's a kind of a train the trainer and an in-house training approach that we'll be using.
And you believe that one additional technician is all that is needed to manage all these devices in four high schools?
At this time, yes, but as this program grows, I may be back here in a couple of years saying, "Okay, with further analysis, we're finding..." Hopefully, with the warranties that we get, we'll be shipping some back. The load won't be great, but my techs average about 1,000 devices per man. So at this point, yes, we can handle it. By year four, I may be regretting that and back here and saying, "Okay, guys, we need a, we need somebody else," but we'll analyze that as we go.
Are we thinking that this is going to be like a revolving thing? Every four years, we're going to have to replace that first-year devices, is that correct?
Pretty much.
If we're going to implement this? So we're making a choice to do this forever, essentially?
Uh, yes, I would hope so. So at some point in the future, we're going to have to make up, five years from now, we're going to have to make up when the state is done with us, we're going to have to make up that difference.
Any other questions?
This is more of a curriculum question, probably. With these devices, which part, are we using them to replace something that we already have in curriculum, that we're already spending money on? Or is this just an additional thing or what? You know, because I look at this and obviously I would love to, for all of our kids to have these devices. I see the dollar amount and it's scary a little bit, but I also know that there could be other monies being taken from other places that could help with that funding. So is that the thought process as you guys are working through this?
Yes, and that also, I think, plays into Ms. Bond's comments earlier. We really will be making the decision on how well does this device interact. The beta test will be on how well does this device run what we have. So we've devoted a tremendous amount of resources already to instructional resources, but we can only use them in such a limited way. So whenever you have access to a wireless laptop or whenever you have access to a computer lab, this is really going to expand our ability to use those. For example, right now, we're using interactive achievement primarily to do benchmark testing. Now the teacher would have the ability to say, "I just taught this lesson. Everybody take five minutes, answer these three questions. Let me put it on the board and show you which ones we didn't do well on. Now let me address that right now," instead of doing a benchmark testing once every nine weeks. So it really is going to give us the opportunity to take much greater advantage of what we already have. And then it will open possibilities as we get further in the implementation to create lots of new resources. That's where the content creation packages come in and those kind of things. So we will be able to add significantly, but right now, we'd really like to just take full advantage of all the resources we already have in place.
Any other questions? Is this, is this going to be a supplement or is this going to impact the purchase of textbooks?
We have considered ways that we can take advantage. Most, that has been a consideration in all the recent adoptions that we've made, what electronic resources are available with what we've already purchased. And going forward, we can certainly, there, you will always have a place for physical textbooks. That's never going to entirely go away, but there will certainly be opportunities in the future that if this becomes a successful initiative, we can look at reducing the number that we would need. So you might in the future look at having a certain amount of physical textbooks and a certain amount of electronic subscriptions to textbooks. So that could down the road be something that will save us money, but we'll always have to have some physical textbooks.
Do you really feel we will always have textbooks?
For the foreseeable future, maybe, maybe not in our students' lifetime, but for the foreseeable future, I think that that will still be a resource we'll take advantage of. But I think we can decrease the amount that we would have to order in textbook adoptions.
I'm looking at this and trying to see if there's any savings attached to it. I don't see it. That, that concerns all of us, I think.
It is a very expensive proposition. It is.
When do you plan on selecting the device and doing these next steps?
Uh, we have the next steps in place and so we're going to be beta testing second semester. So we're ready to go on that part. And like I said, it really is a matter of, we've tried theoretically to compare. These are what they tell us the device will do and here's what we think, but we want to put it in a student's hand and say, "Try this on our network in your classroom and does it really work the way that they're going to tell us it does?" And then I think it's going to make our device choice very clear. I really do. Because although there are very popular brands and, and things that everyone, we want to see how is our resource in our classroom on our network, how's that going to work? So we're ready to go with that in the next couple of weeks.
What numbers are we looking at as far as testing? How many devices of each are you going to buy?
A classroom set.
Classroom set, so.
How many?
A classroom set.
Okay.
What size screens are you looking at at this point? Are you looking at more like the seven-inch or are you looking at more the eight-and-a-half?
I'll have to defer to Harvey. I don't remember which ones we're ordering.
Yes, I mean, you know, seven-and-a-half is more smaller. Can, I mean, I like.
The larger ones, we're going to go with a nine?
Eight-and-a-half. Okay. So the standard.
That's one of the Windows ones that Julie has. So, and Joe, just to chime in, there are savings on my end. There may be savings on the textbook side, but eventually, if every kid has a device in their hands, I don't need labs in the classrooms. I don't need all these wireless carts to go around. Now I just need a set of keyboards and a screen at some point that a kid can plug into if he need a larger screen. I just plug into that. I've got my screen. I've got a keyboard if I want a full-size keyboard for testing. So if I need to use this device for creation, I can. So yes, as we move forward, there are certainly technological savings at our modern high schools.
It would be nice if you could give us a guesstimate as to what we're talking about savings-wise presently down the road as, as, as the program develops from the classroom to possibly year after year. It would be nice to see exactly what you're saying.
Be glad to do that.
Thank you.
Again, it'll be sort of a, it'll be a little wishy-washy, but it's a best guess.
It's better than what we have now.
Okay.
And definitely include the textbooks part of that. That's what, the question I was trying to get to earlier that Joe actually asked, that replacing textbooks, you know, where, how does that fit in?
Yeah. Any other questions?
Yes, so the accidental insurance, what exactly does that cover?
Two, two things. And Julie is the expert, so she can chime in. If I drop the iPad and it breaks or the computer of any kind, because we do, we do the same thing for a laptop, it's not covered under warranty. It's, you replace everything yourself. It doesn't matter what the age, it's tomorrow and you drop a computer, it's not covered. Accidental insurance covers that. It falls out of my car and breaks, it's covered. Most accidental policies also add in a extended warranty. An Apple iPad has a warranty of one year. We're giving these to kids for four, so we need to extend that warranty as far out as we can so when the device malfunctions, a battery goes bad, that we can recoup those, that money. So it's, it's both things. It's accidental and it's, and it's extended.
Okay. So what happens when the device disappears?
That's what's my question.
Interesting question. Some management device softwares actually have GPS hooked in and you can relocate the device, be it that it disappeared and that wasn't factual or we found it at a pawn shop or, so you can actually, and we would get that, you actually have location on the device so that you can find it when it disappears. The device will tell you, "I'm here and this is exactly where I'm at" and you can send yourself or the police to pick it up.
Any other questions?
And I will also assume there will be extras in the classrooms because a student will come, iPad will be left home, so the...
We've got to do that. We've also foresee that we'll have to have a bank of extras because when it goes down and most of them we're shooting for, a lot of what we're trying to figure in our purchasing is we'd like to have a guaranteed 24-hour maintenance turnaround. That's probably a little over optimistic. So when you're down, when that device is down, the child's instruction is down, so we really don't want to have that.
So are you figuring in, are you adding those into the numbers that you've given us tonight, having an extra bank of those?
They're not per se in those numbers, but I think those numbers are conservative enough to cover it.
Okay. So do we, and because I'm not tech savvy, you know that, we have children that live in areas where they may not be able to get service or with these devices that, that's not going to happen. We're not going to run into that problem.
These devices will look for, will, will have Wi-Fi, but more than likely are not going to have, and then I'll explain the terms, I'm sorry. They'll have Wi-Fi access, but they won't have Y-LAN or W-LAN, which means I don't have a Verizon card like yours do and I can't go anywhere and get access. And the reason is, is if I do that, I've opened up a whole nother can of worms as far as the Child Internet Protection Act. So I have to protect children by the law from getting to places that they don't belong. And if they go home and I've provided them that card and they go to places, I'm in, I'm in trouble with the federal government and we depend on their funds. So we know we still have a gap. How do we get internet to the house? Most of the instructional platforms, therefore, we look at are going to be, we will, should, are trying to have the capacity to load Jennifer's instructional applications onto the machine, so... the machine so my instruction is not dependent on internet connection when I go home. So that's, that's kind of the design because we know, oh, they'll have it and we'll provide it, but how do we take care of the kids who don't have it in the home?
Right.
And, and the only way to do that safely is to make sure that we can push the instruction down to the device while it's in school and then they take it home and can still execute the instruction.
And I'll just chime in, that was very important to us. We did a survey with current eighth graders and current ninth graders at Charlesville Middle and Eastern Montgomery, assuming that that was probably the area that had the least access just because of their service is not so easy to get and the demographics, to find out exactly how many kids had access, what kind of access they had. So that's been an important factor as we've gone through is making sure that all our kids will have access to the resources they need even at home.
And surprisingly, the access was greater than you'd think.
Most E-books and all that, you don't have to have internet to get all your, you know, all those books and things are downloaded and you don't have to be on the internet to read them because I would most definitely not agree with everybody having 4G. I mean, that's, that goes above way too much.
It's, yeah, economics, if that was a big number, it's $40 a month, a device.
Yeah.
Per month.
You can't push textbooks down to your device, can you?
Probably can, yes.
Well, currently, that's not an option for, at least textbooks, you can't get on an iPad directly there.
At a minimum, you'd be looking at downloading a chapter in a PDF format. So we, that is something that's also on our list of things that we've made sure it can do.
Okay, so if we have children who are not going to be able to have total access and there's things that they need to look up using their device that they can't do that other students can do, how do we work that?
Again, going back, this is not a perfect solution. It's, it's a difficult situation that we're in, but they do have Wi-Fi, so they can go back to the school, they can get access, they can go to the Montgomery Floyd Library, get access.
As long as they have the means to get there.
It's, it's not perfect. I can't tell you that it is. So we do the best we can, but as far as overcoming a total equity, that's, that's a tough puzzle.
Well, and I can't imagine a student still not, not wanting it even if they know they can't have everything at home. I think they would still be tickled to have that resource in the mornings, in class, after school, do that as much as they can. I mean, just from seeing my students and, and, you know, the things that are my kids and their friends, you know, I have some that work with me that don't have internet access, but I still think their students would love having it.
Sure, they'd love having it, but are we making sure we're equitable with all the students in the county, you know?
We have to look at that very closely. Let's go to the other, let's go outside the box for a minute and go to the opposite Have you thought about, okay, I've got eight grandchildren and amongst those eight grandchildren, I think there's probably five, six, seven, or eight iPads. I don't know, there's a bunch of them. I could ask the audience, how many of your children or grandchildren have iPads? And I think we'd be shocked at how many do. Have you thought about, again, bring their own device? BYOD?
We're doing that. BYOD is healthy in Montgomery County and.
I understand that, but what I'm saying is to defray some of the costs that we've put into this program.
It's a real, it's.
I'm thinking outside the box, is something to think about.
It's, would you ever, I, I mean, it's a puzzle. Would you ever say to a kid, it's like saying to somebody in the band, you play the oboe, but I'm going to make you, when you come to band, I'm going to make you play clarinet? Well, I'm comfortable with the oboe.
I don't understand the.
So if the kid comes with a device that they're comfortable with, would you actually say, no, you, I'm taking this one away from you, you've got to use that?
I didn't say devices, I said iPads.
So the point is, would we allow that? Sure, I would think. BYOD is our policy. If a kid comes in with a device, they use it. The glory of a unified standard device though, is that it's much easier on the teacher because the teacher is, is basically delivering instruction on a uniform platform. They know what they're doing works. Whereas, so if I'm on a Android tablet, I know I've got an Android app and on the iPad, I don't know whether you have a compatible device and, or a compatible app and how it exactly works. So there's flexibility for sure. And pluses and minuses in both, both approaches.
We just have to be very careful because the things that you're asking us to do are really to consider changing our instruction and changing our instructional resources. And so if you're going to do that, you have to make sure, you know, it's exactly like, on some device, you might pick something up and it works one way and on another, I mean, you've all done it, you look at sometimes the presentations look one way when we present them, when you pull them up on your iPad, they look differently. And so we'd, we'd have to be very careful because the way we've presented this initiative to you really is drastically changing how we use instructional resources and, and how we look at instruction in the classroom. And so we just, we'd have to be very thoughtful about it.
But I think this type of brainstorming situation that we've had here is, I hope is beneficial for you because it certainly has been for me. As Ms. Franklin brings up, we're very concerned about, about equity. And that, that came out of this, so thank you. Anything else? Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Well, I know you will continue, first of all, thank you, Jennifer and Harvey for your presentation. I, I know that the board will continue to deliberate on this subject matter and we will again look forward to your guidance and direction on this as we move forward through the months and considering the overall budget. At this time, we now have employee groups that will make presentations. We have eight groups and I will call them up in the order that's indicated on your board documents. The first speaker will come forward, Robbie Jones. She represents the Maintenance and Custodial Group.
I'm Robbie Jones. I want to thank you for allowing me to speak here tonight. As Dr. Staiton said, I am representing the Custodians and the Maintenance Department with the school system. Right now, I am the Head Custodian at Christiansburg Middle School. I also am the Custodial Representative to the Superintendent Advisory Committee as well as Vice President of the Montgomery County Education Association. Tonight, I want to start by thanking you in advance for your past support and your future support. As you know, many of you know, I have been before this board many times asking for salary increases, requesting funds for supplies, asking to maintain, increase, or increase the number of personnel needed for the everyday operations of our buildings. This evening, I'd like to touch on a few of those. First, salary. I was glad to see the collaboration of so many people working together to gather information to hopefully improve the salary scales. It's difficult for me to report back to my custodians that they're going to receive a salary increase, but when they get their paycheck after they get their raise, it's less than what it was prior to the increase. Because of this, a majority of the custodians here at Montgomery County Public Schools have to work a second job just to make ends meet. This is becoming extremely difficult when we expect our employees to give us 100% for eight hours when they have worked four hours or more prior to coming in. With custodians having to work multiple jobs, their families are the ones who suffer. Second, I asked you to maintain funds for custodial supplies and equipment. This is a given that we're going to need toilet paper and paper towels. We also need chemicals and equipment to clean and have a safe environment for everyone who enters our building. While we are provided the most efficient equipment, just like school buses, our equipment does wear out and needs to be replaced. In some instances, it might be a little cheaper to replace them than to maintain them. Last, I'd like the current levels of compensation to stay the same. For example, fully funded single subscriber, subscriber insurance. This benefit enables MCPS to attract and retain our good quality employees. For every MCPS employee, we have proven time and time again that we can be efficient. Now we need to remain effective. We are responsible for what I think is the most valuable resource in Montgomery County, our children. Thank you.
We will now ask Connie Bowes instructional, to represent the Instructional Aides.
Good evening. My name is Connie Bowes and I'm a parent educator at Christiansburg High School. I'm also the ESP Chair for the Montgomery County Education Association, the ESP Board Member for District Three VEA, and also a representative to the VEA Special Education Committee. For the past couple of years, we have been trying to get a number of sick days and personnel days brought up to the same standards as the rest of the state of Virginia. With the help of the computer system, calling personnel throughout the state and ESPs across the state, I've compiled a list for you to show you what parent educators get across the state of Virginia. You will see that Montgomery County is the only one that gives five sick days to us and one personal day. What does this show to the people who really work hard every day, to those students to give them the best education they deserve? Nine times out of 10, we as parent educators will be the first ones to get sick before a teacher because either the students that we work one-on-one with who show up at school sick, just like any other child in the building who comes sick. Yes, these children do come sick to school every day. Next, we're asking for a pay increase is needed for all people who work in the school system. Most of us work two to three jobs in order to make the need to pay for our bills each month. Many of the ESPs and teachers are now gets food stamps and have children that are on reduced or free lunches in the school system. What does this say to future staff members to Montgomery County who will come to look at us for possible jobs? Please take this time to think about everything that is being presented here this evening. Montgomery County can lead the way in having the best children in the state of Virginia if we put our personnel first and we can be all number one.
Thank you, Connie Bowes, and also thank you, Robbie, for your presentations. Nutrition, school nutrition is up next. I asked Michael Marsonelli to come forward and make his presentation on behalf of school nutrition.
Good evening, members of the board. Dr. Staiton. I don't have a presentation, so to speak. Being a self-supporting department, we are bound by the decisions made by the school board with regard to wages. And as always, we encourage or we support any discussion on the increase in wages for our employees. The school nutrition program employees are the, the lowest paid employees in the county. But we're not here complaining about that. We're here thanking you for your support, your ongoing support, your future support. And of course, any, anything that you decide to discuss about increase in wages, we would support. Any questions for me about school lunch? I'd be happy to answer those too.
Thank you, Michael.
Thank you.
Keisha Miller. Keisha will come forward and represent the bus drivers and transportation employees.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. My name is Keisha Miller and I'm representing the school bus drivers and bus aides. I have driven a school bus for 11 years in Montgomery County and eight more years in the Richmond metro area. I love my job very much and hope that I'll be able to keep driving for many, many more. I'm a single mom and I depend on this job, as do many of my coworkers. First of all, we want to thank the board for what you've done for our department in the past and ask that you continue to give us the same consideration for raises as you give the other employees in the system. Every year, we fear our part-time incentive is going to be taken away from us and we face that again this year. The incentive was given to us to help with health insurance, retirement, life insurance, et cetera, that the teachers and other staff have paid for them. Most other school systems provide those benefits for their school bus drivers and other part-time employees. Montgomery County does not, so I use a portion of my incentive for health insurance and the rest to help pay with expenses. I depend on every penny of it to make ends meet and I still have to work in between routes at a school as, especially at aid. We haven't received a step raise for over five years and less than 3% during that time for the cost of living. Therefore, we have less and less real income to survive on. Please don't take the incentive away from us. For me personally, without the incentive, I would bring home around $8, $900 a month and that doesn't leave a lot to go for everything else. I, along with my fellow drivers and aides, am also very concerned about the effect the Affordable Healthcare Law may have on our wages. I personally work more than 30 hours per week for Montgomery County Schools, as do other drivers. There are field trips, special need routes, vocational routes, and many more. Many drivers like myself work as an aide or in the cafeteria as a lunch aide and could, excuse me, just to make ends meet. Our department could not run and operate without many of us working more than 30 hours and we cannot afford to take a large cut in pay for a law that we have no control over. Drivers and other part-time employees in many of our surrounding counties have had health insurance and retirement benefits for years. The full-time employees and teachers in Montgomery County will not see any decreases in their salaries for this, so please give us the same consideration. The part-time employees are the foundation of the school system. School bus drivers transport the students safely to and from school, but that is not all that we do. That is a part of our responsibility. We provide a bond with the children. We love and care for our children and they respect us and feel safe when they're with us. Daily, we pre-trip our buses to make certain that they are able to transport the children safely to and from school. On inclement weather days and extreme cold days, even more time is put into inspecting the buses so that we can make sure that the brakes don't freeze up or that we have gel in our fuel so that while the children are standing outside waiting for the buses to show up, that they won't have to freeze to death while they're out there. Yes, we are bus drivers, but at times we feel like mechanics with the thoroughness in checking the buses over to ensure that they are safe for everyone out on the streets as well as our children. Now mind you, we're not complaining. We just want you to keep in mind that there are more, that we do more than just drive the children to and from school. In closing, I want to thank the board once again for what you've done for us in the past and trust that you will continue to make fair decisions on our behalf. Thank you.
Thank you, Keisha. Mickey Williams is up next, representing the Technology Department.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. My name is Mickey Williams and I have represented the Technology Department these past few years. And during these years, we have accomplished a lot of the district's goals that have been set for us. Some of those goals have been completing the first phase of the 21st Century Project, updating the computer networks and adding wireless access points to meet the increased use of wireless devices. We are in the process of overseeing the school's security upgrades as well. And we've implemented a new student information system that required additional training for staff members by our department. This is on top of a daily work schedule that includes servicing over 7,000 computers and laptops and over 1,000 pieces of 21st Century equipment. With each project completed and goal met, excuse me, requires additional maintenance items that need to be maintained. And tonight, with. With each project completed and goal met, excuse me, requires additional maintenance items that need to be maintained. And tonight, with that, the Technology Department asks the board to strongly consider additional staffing to our department. Since 2000, we have seen a reduction in staffing for our department. In addition to staffing, we asked the board to consider salary scale adjustments and raises due to the fact that we recently lost another trained member, actually this week, to be in fact, a matter of fact, to the commercial world. So, in closing, the ability of this department to continue our success depends on your level of commitment. Thank you.
Thank you, Mickey. Rick Reber will come forward now to represent the Principals' Association. Rick?
This is my first time at the microphone with my new bifocals, so if I miss a paragraph, bear with me. Thank you for the opportunity to speak tonight on behalf of Principals', Assistant Principals' and Curriculum Supervisors. We're fully aware of the challenges that you have faced and continue to face as a board. First, there was this significant financial crisis, the most significant financial crisis of our lifetimes. Then, a roof fell, and much-needed construction began and has mostly been completed. All of this has taken place while more physical responsibility has been moved from the state level to the local level. As you met these challenges as a board, something had to give. Unfortunately, what gave was the number of employees that could be supported and the ability to sustain adequate salary scales. Over the past five years, MCPS employees have been asked to pay for the sins of speculators and for the misfortune of buildings aging at an inopportune time. While the 21st Century brings more challenges to education, fewer employees continue to do more work with less compensation. We each are experiencing our own personal economic slowdown, and without your full support, we'll continue to do so far into the future. With all due respect, and with full appreciation for the difficult decisions this board has had to make, we believe that the time has come to reverse the downward spiral and to start rebuilding the morale and the physical well-being of your hard-working employees. The Principals' Association fully supports all of the budget goals that were presented to you at the last board meeting, but we particularly support goal number two, and I quote, "to adjust compensation for all employees using a long-term salary plan that includes a competitive benefits package." For many of us, however, "long-term" sounds a bit like a hollow promise. We propose that maximum effort might become the better catchphrase, and hope that "long-term" morphs into "sooner than expected." From the Montgomery County Principal Association, and on behalf of all employees, we want to thank you for your support and your effort, both past and future.
Thanks. Thank you, Rick. Representing Administrative Assistance, Becky Shanks will speak on their behalf. Let's see two people come.
Laurie's gonna give you a script.
Okay.
Good evening, on behalf of the Administrative Assistants, and I just want to take a minute and ask them to stand. Several have come tonight, and I'd just like you to recognize them. Thank you. School board members, school administration, thank you for the opportunity to speak with you. Like other groups, we're hopeful that our school system can begin to make positive progress, especially in view of the last few years of painful cuts. Because there have been numerous changes in the makeup of the board and the school administration over the last few years, I would like to review just a little history with you concerning the Administrative Assistants. The year 2008, 2009 was the last year that employees received a step increase. That same year, the Support Services salary scale received a review resulting in increases averaging 10% in addition to the increase that all employees received that year. This well-deserved increase benefited all the full-time support staff groups, except for the Administrative Assistants. Our group was scheduled to be adjusted the following year, in 2009, 2010. New salary scales were drafted. However, as you know, that was the year the budget crisis hit, and our adjustment was put on hold. Also in 2009, an outside firm conducted a study of our employee group. Their review evaluated our salaries compared to our responsibilities, the assignment of positions to that salary scale, as well as comparing our salaries to similar positions in other school districts and local employers. The recommendations from that study have never been implemented. Basically, we entered the drought already behind. Our group is relatively small in number, and we believe adjustments could begin to be made to bring our group back into a competitive range. Even if a plan were in place to make changes over two or three years, we would be encouraged. For example, we have been advised that if an average 5% increase were implemented, the impact to the budget would be $151,000, which is 16 hundredths of 1% of the total budget. Similarly, a 10% increase would be $302,000, which represents 32 hundredths of 1% of the total budget. We do recognize the challenging task before you and are patient, but we respectfully request that you consider the Administrative Assistants as you make the difficult decisions in the days to come concerning our division budget. We do thank you again for your time and your service to our schools. Thank you. And thank you.
Thank you, Becky. The final group is the Montgomery County Education Association. I have three names, so I'm gonna call all three names, and one person will show up. Kelly Pleasant, or Andrea Langston, or Carol Fox.
You have two of three.
Oh, right.
But actually, Ms. Langston is no longer employed with Montgomery County Public Schools, and our other person, our moral supporter, Susan Moni, she's the second compensation chair. But Carol and I are gonna speak with you this evening. Okay? I want to thank the school board, first off, for giving us the opportunity to address you this evening as we begin yet another budget season. And my name is Kelly Pleasant, and I am president of the Montgomery County Education Association, and with me tonight is Carol Fox, and she is our Compensation Committee Chair. Despite the uncertain funding levels at both the state and local levels, we want to share what we consider to be essential compensation priorities for 2014-15.
Number one. Can you guess? Salaries. There must be a plan to reinstate the honor and accuracy of the experience-driven salary scales. This longstanding plan for employee compensation has been invalidated by years of frozen salaries. The MCEA believes that all school employees should be on the salary scale commensurate with their years of experience. We were pleased to be asked to work alongside administration to do this important work. Although on paper, our salaries increased last year, the reality for most employees was a decrease in take-home pay. For 2014-15, the MCEA requests a 6% salary adjustment for all employees. Along with the VEA, MCEA is actively lobbying the state to pay its share of the 6%. Southwest Virginians own delegate, Ben Chafin and Senator Philip Puckett have submitted budget amendments to that end. Second, along with the benefits, in order to protect the current levels of compensation for MCPS employees, the MCEA is asking that there be no further changes to fully-funded, single-subscriber health insurance. As it will take time to make the necessary salary scale adjustments, it is more important than ever that health benefits remain untouched in order to retain and recruit quality educators.
Number three, not only can we not afford the loss of any more employees, reinstating positions previously lost should be an important priority. Increased class sizes, as experienced over the last couple of years, are detrimental to a quality education for our students. We know that class size matters. There needs to be adequate staffing in all employee categories to ensure the desired results of educational excellence. The current benefit of the Sick Leave Bank should also be protected. This is a benefit that employees have come to depend upon. The elimination of the bank equates to a reduction of benefits. Operating under a reduced budget in recent years has caused the school system to make difficult decisions on staffing programs and compensation, and we know those decisions are very difficult. All employee groups have felt the effects of these changes, which continue to impact morale and job satisfaction. Do you have any questions for us at this time? If not, then we thank you very much for your time.
Thank you, Kelly and Carol. Okay, board members, as we get ready to set up for the next one, do I control that? You've heard several presentations that will affect your deliberations on the budget, so at this time, what I would like to do is transition and officially present, on behalf of Ms. Blackburn, the preliminary recommendation for the 2014-2015 budget. Based on your direction provided at the January 7, 2014 board meeting, we have developed a needs-based budget that reflects the school divisions' operational and capital requirements. I will present what the, what is in the superintendent's proposed budget in the following slides, and as you begin your discussion tonight, Katie Miano and other members of the leadership team are here to answer your questions. Slide two, this slide provides detail, details about operating needs that we feel are essential for the school divisions' 2014-2015 budget. To meet our operational needs, we require $125,000 to pay for additional utility costs at New Auburn Middle School. We funded the Governor's Summer School with one-time money in the 2014 budget, but we seek to restore and fund four slots at the Governor's Summer School for about $7400 in this year's budget. You heard earlier about the cost to do the Virginia E-Learning incentive grant. It would cost under $8,000, $858,000 to implement in all four high schools. The online student enrollment software is about $75,000. $50,000 is required for expansion of College Application Week to all high schools, which is similar to the program we did at East Durn Montgomery High School. Less than $89,000 for math instructional enhancements. To pay for unfunded VRS mandates, it will cost about $1.1 million. This includes lines 12 through 15 and line seven on the chart. Based on a 10% projected increase, we estimate that health insurance will cost an additional $1.2 million. To ensure part-time employees in accordance with the Affordable Healthcare Act, we estimate a need of $1.1 million. As I mentioned on January 7, and you have heard Ms. Blackburn say that the Governor's budget does nothing to provide salary increases for educators, therefore, we are proposing a 2.8% increase that will cost $2.3 million. Slide three reflects the staff's, staff changes affecting the operating budget and capital increases needed to accomplish planned building repairs and roof maintenance. We seek to restore staffing for in-school suspension programs that were funded with one-time money in the current school year with costs of approximately $36,000. $127,600 to restore two math coaches that were also paid out of one-time funds. $63,800 will restore instructional technology resource teacher, a technology, instructional technology resource teacher. Position for the Virginia E-Learning Backpack Initiative Grant. Another $63,800 will add a technology technician position, also for the Virginia E-Learning Backpack Initiative Grant. The addition of the $45,300 will budget for a full-time payroll benefits data assistant, which was approved by this board at the December 17 board meeting, 2013. Under capital increases, you see the breakdown, which totals $575,000 for building repairs, roof maintenance, and 21st Century classroom improvements. Please note that improvements in technology are ongoing in order to sustain a modern, technologically advanced classroom, and we must continue to upgrade our aging fleet with safe and reliable buses. The total proposed budget increase is approximately $1.4 million, and as you can see, the overall operating budget comes to about $103 million. Slide four restates what our required revenue is based on, this needs-based budget that we have presented. Note that the state gives an increase of $2.6 million. However, over $1.1 million will go to pay for mandates related to VRS increases and requirements related to the Affordable Healthcare Act. The present needs-based budget exceeds the current known revenue by approximately $5.7 million. To date, there is nothing that I'm aware of from the govern, from the new governor that indicates an increase in state revenue for education. There's an article in the Roanoke Times wherein the governor talks about his priorities. However, there's no substantive, substantive remarks on educating or education funding. The last two slides are for your review. Ms. Blackburn wanted me to point out that she is not at any place where she is ready to recommend reductions in the budget. Therefore, I want to reemphasize that slides five and six are provided for your discussion and review. Please note that if funding is not obtained to support your needs-based budget, we will have to make reductions. As you begin your discussion tonight, we are asking for the board's guidance and direction proceed to the next round of budget development. With that, I await your questions, and I say I wait, but that's the leadership team waits, because it takes all of us to meet up to the standard of Ms. Blackburn.
Board members, any comments, any questions?
I have a question about the E-Learning Backpack.
Could you pull your mic towards?
A question about the E-Learning Backpack Grant. Is there a time limit that we Is there a time limit that we have to come in this year, or we're not eligible for, for
Yes, currently, we have the three schools that are designated accredited with warning. We fully anticipate that that will change. So for all three of those schools to receive funding, we would have to participate in the program in this year. So that would be at the latest, I would think, probably April or May.
And then would that, I'm sorry, would that be in, if those schools are not accredited or that we, we get, come into a similar situation next year, would we, do we keep that funding for a certain amount of time?
The state has given us the incentive that even if we become accredited, you still have the four years.
You still have the four years, no matter.
So as long as we participate this year, all three schools will get four years.
Okay.
Okay, the, one of the big questions has been for the last year, the impact of the Affordable Healthcare Act and our part-time employees' benefit. How does that play into this?
Joe, would you please come forward?
Yes, ma'am. All this year, we've been hitting a moving target, haven't we? Every time we think we've got it nailed down, the Affordable Care Act, they, they change the rules on us. Right now, as it is, if nothing else changes, starting January 1, we'll have to start of 2015, we'll have to start giving part-time, part-time people 30 hours or more, we have to offer them health insurance. Currently, if we take our, the number that you have before you takes into consideration putting them on the plan and carrying them for the rest of the year, that would just affect, that number would go up for the following year because we would be covering the entire fiscal year rather than just the six months of the fiscal year.
Right. So those employees making 30 hour, with 30 hours or more, but what about our part-time employees that we have been considering at 20 hours, who've been receiving the part-time benefits after, you know, we pushed it back to three years? What happens to those employees?
They would not be offered the health insurance.
Right.
And it depends on how the board chooses to, to move forward with that, whether or not the part-time incentive, I guess, is the crux of that question, whether that moves forward or not. The basis of it is, is that we have to come up with $1.1 million in order to cover the health insurance for part-time employees that work 30 hours or more.
Right. And again, my question is, does this reflect the funding to still help support employees who work less than 40 hours, uh, 30 hours? Are we not consider, we won't be considering that, I know the, the act says 30 hours is part-time. 20 hours has been our threshold.
We, we could offer it to, to those that, that work less, the, the insurance. That would be a poor decision.
Okay, and I believe it'd be a poor decision if we just left those folks with nothing who have been serving us for many years but don't do 20, 30 hours. So does this budget reflect those people for the six months?
No, ma'am.
Their, their money would just stop.
This represents, no, ma'am. The part-time incentive is, is, isn't, that $1.1 million is additional to the monies that are currently in the budget, and that's a recurring. If that, that hasn't been touched, it's, this is additional funding that we're asking for with the $1.1 million.
So next year's, 2015, 16?
Yes, ma'am.
Is where we would be making other decisions around the, that group of employees with less than 30 hours?
We would be making them, we, we'd need to make it prior to January 15, January 2015. We would have to make that decision, and if that's the pleasure of the board, then we need to put that number into next year's budget to, for that increase that would include those employees.
That's my point. Where is that money? Is it figured into?
It is not figured in that number. Those numbers, that number represents approximately 260 employees that would be eligible under the Affordable Healthcare Act, additional employees.
Okay. So what is the number of folks who will not be?
That number, I don't have, I don't, I don't have that number. I don't, I'd have to get that for you, Ms.
So you know, I'm asking for the folks under 30 hours, but would be, have, are, are receiving our part-time benefits at this time?
Yes, ma'am.
At this point, I'd like to thank the, the groups that presented this evening. We, our employees are, are asked constantly to do more and more, and you continue to get less in return, and we're aware of that. And I just want to thank you very much for your presentations tonight. We did hear you loud and clear. Any other comments?
I'll just say, as I said, I guess it was last week, we were asked what we wanted to do if it was a needs-based budget. And as far as I'm concerned, that's the only thing I'm voting for. I think when we saw our test scores this year, I had comments that I thought it reflected the number of full-time positions that we have eliminated in this district, and it was starting to affect the students.
Yes.
And asked board members to consider that when we got to budget. So now's the point we need to be considering, making sure folks understand, this is what it takes to run this district. When I first came on this board, the budget was $68 million. And we're now at only what we need to run, 108, 103? We should be at a, at least a 125 million running this district with what we need if we had kept doing the increases and improvements that we should have been doing, where we've had to backtrack and scrape and lay off people, and I don't care how you call it attrition or whatever, if people are being shifted around, you're laying them off. So as far as I'm concerned, I still want to see the figures for the part-time employees, but I'm prepared to send what we have, so that it's needed.
I, I would like to just say, based upon what I'm looking at right here, I don't know that I can vote for a budget where we're going to essentially ask property owners to have an 8.2 cent tax increase. I can't do that in good conscience. And so if we need to relook at this, to look at some ways to, to cut some of these things back, or to rework some of these things in order to bring that number down, unless we're going to get some kind of assurances from the county, from the board of supervisors, that they're going to increase our funding, which I doubt very seriously is going to happen, I just, I can't do that. So looking at some of those reductions that we've, that were presented to us tonight, we may need to definitely seriously take those into consideration, at least some of them.
A question about the health insurance that we've discussed about the, going to the private health insurance package. Is that, I know that that isn't something that's going to show any savings in the short term, but when do we make that decision?
Yes, ma'am. We're currently, we, we are going to get a renewal rate for our current policy, if you will, by the end of January. We are working on an RFP now for that self-insurance, and we should get that back more than likely mid-February. So we're, we're mid to end of February, let me say, and so we're working on that right now. Not to, I don't want to cloud this, but we are running much higher right now than we did the same time last year with our health insurance. Our fully funded insurance right now is, is running higher than, than it was previously. So the less than 1% or no increase is unlikely for next year.
So are we closer to that 10% mark that you've built in, or somewhere, please, below 10?
I'm hoping that we come in below. Figures don't indicate that right now.
I want to thank the administration for putting this together also. This is a starting point, and it's one that we can work with. Any other comments? I do have one more comment I'd like to make then. We, we, I know for a fact that, having been there and done that, it's very difficult for a school employee to go to work in the morning, go home at night, and live on the salary they have. I find it almost impossible for a teacher to live on their income, for a custodian to live on their income, for any school employee to live on their income, on their sole income. It's usually more work after, you, you, you come to the school, you do your work, and then you have to go and do your night job, or your spouse or significant other one has to work. And, and this takes a toll on everyone, and, and I know it does. But we can't, we can't do more than come up here and discuss what we need to put in the budget, what we need to take out of the budget. We need your assistance. And I went to a, the supervisors' meeting last night, and they had a hearing for those people who wanted to speak on the school, on the, on the budget. And I was the only one that spoke. There was no one else there talking on the budget. And we're part of that budget, and it's very crucial that if we want our budget to be accepted by the supervisors, we need to speak to it. I know, and again, I'm going to say this because I, I've been there, you, you put a day's work in, you come home, and you're exhausted. Some of you have to go on to second jobs, you're exhausted. For me to ask you to go out and speak to the supervisors, for me to ask you to speak to us every chance you can get is, you're looking at it, and you're saying, whoa, how much more can I fit in? And I do understand that. It was last year or the year before where we had on the table that we were going to close a school. I thought it was amazing. 70 people spoke that night, and we had 150 to 200 others standing along the hallways and in the back. That was impressive. Those are the things, those are the types of things that need to be done for people to understand exactly what the community wants. It's difficult if three or four or five people stand up and say, well, you know, I, I can't pay any more taxes. I understand that, and I appreciate that. But if 150 people stand up and say, I want a better education for my kid. I want a better education for my kid because I didn't get a chance to have that. That's meaningful. That's very meaningful. And we need to weigh those things. We need to take a very close look at it, and as I say, when, when the supervisors or the school board asks the community to come out and speak on behalf of what they want, we need to hear it. Last night, I was the only one who spoke, and I was disappointed that there weren't hundreds of other, there, others there speaking for the school system. A lot of people told me they didn't know about it, but that's okay. We're going to have many more chances, and we need to take those opportunities to do just that. Any other comments?
Just, where are we? Before we move on, Mr. Ives, I want to make certain that we understand what your directions are as we move forward. We move to the next level of development for this budget.
Okay.
And I understand that what Ms. Franklin wants us, wants to see as we go back and rework some of these numbers is that she wants the part-time employees, how those numbers are going to affect that group of people. Is there any other directions that the board is going, wants to provide for, to us at this time?
Are there any other places that we can look for reductions? Should we come to others? I mean, is this, the list that you've provided to us, is that all that there is possibly, or are there other places that we can look to?
As I stated early, sir, we, Ms. Blackburn is not at a point to make, make any recommendations to the board for any reductions. What we did was provide a list of items that you can deliberate and consider if you want us to relook the, the numbers that we presented in the budget. But remember, this is a needs-based budget that if there's any reductions taken out, that, then those needs will be affected.
Very little direction, but you did get some.
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Thank you.
We'll have more meetings to give you more direction.
Right. But we need to remember, on the 21st, we need to approve a budget to be put for, out to the public for our public hearing on the 28th.
Correct.
So if there's things that you want to see, or numbers you want to see, or you need to be speaking to that very quickly so we can be prepared to do something on Tuesday
Next item.
Yep. That's all I have, sir.
I'm sorry, Dr. Stanton, there is one more agenda.
There's one more item?
Thank you. It's the benefits data assistant, to fill the benefit data assistant at 50%.
Oh, yes. We present the, the benefits data assistant for human resource position. We present that for your action, sir.
I'm sorry?
On the benefits data assistant, this is the.
I'm looking for that.
The part-time HR?
It's part-time, yeah, right.
So it was presented to us that we, that this be at a part-time position till Jan, till June, and several of us said we would like to consider that to be full-time. I think we voted for that. Superintendent is saying she would like us to reconsider it until, as part-time, and then figure it into this budget.
Correct.
Let me give you some more information on that. Ms. Blackburn initially stated that she wanted to, wanted you to reconsider the position as a whole, to reconsider your previous vote for approval. She has since reflected more on that and believe that we should allow the vote to stand as it is, but she's asking she be allowed to only fill the position until June as a part-time.
As a half-time.
That's right.
Correct. Let's start off with a motion. We'll present that as a motion, and we can discuss it.
I make a motion to discuss.
So you make a motion to approve the?
To approve a half-time employee.
Until?
Until June, and until which time we need to reconsider.
Okay. Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, now discussion.
Okay, so, well, I do, just so I, I am understanding clearly, we're not reversing a decision that was made in December to fund a full-time position. We're only going to hire a half-time position. Is that correct?
That's correct. We're only asking you to approve hiring a half-time position, and keep in mind that the full-time positions already been placed in the needs-based budget that we presented tonight for a full-time position to begin after June.
Any more discussion?
Well, it's basically just doing what she asked for to start off with.
Exactly.
Right.
Okay, all in favor of the motion? Please say aye.
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 Any opposed? Agenda preparation. Thank you, Mr. Stanton.
Thank you, sir.
If you look at agenda preparation, you can see that there's a list of items. January 21 is the adoption of the budget. January 21 is the adoption of the budget. January 28 will be the public hearing, and I hope we have hundreds. February 4, we approve the preliminary operating budget. And then February 18 is another board meeting where we move back to pretty much our usual Do I have a motion for adjournment?
So move.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All, any opposed? Thank you.